Three, two, one. All right. Well, good evening, and the Platteville Journal and the Main Street Program welcome you to the 2014 Platteville Common Council Candidate Forum live here at the Municipal Building and on CenturyLink Channel 36. I'm Steve Prestigard, the editor of the Platteville Journal, and tonight's forum is intended to help City of Platteville voters make an informed decision for both the February 18th primary election as well as the April 1st general election. The three candidates we have here, which are from left to right, Brian Chapman, Amy Seeboth, and Darryl Browning, one of them will be eliminated in the primary election on the 18th. The top two vote-getters will advance to the general election on April 1st. Our intention tonight is to guide a conversation, this is not a debate, among the three candidates on city issues and how these candidates feel about those issues. The questions were raised during journal coverage of the city's government over the past year as well as questions that were emailed to me from journal readers. We'll start tonight by introducing the three candidates and ask them what they feel the most important issue of the campaign is, and we will conclude by asking each candidate why we voters in the city should vote for them. In between, we'll cover the issues that the city faces right now and maybe even issues that the candidates themselves bring up. As I told the candidates, there are no formal time limits for answers, but in the sake of brevity, for the sake of brevity, we'd ask that everyone answer questions completely yet succinctly. I would also point out that for this, this is for the at-large seat that's presently held by Patrice Steiner, all city voters will be able to vote for this seat. There will be a second race on the ballot, however, Eileen Nichols is unopposed on the ballot for November. So let's introduce the candidates, and again, starting on the left, Brian Chapman, he is a civil engineering technician, technician, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also the owner of a painting company. Amy Seeboth is the sustainability coordinator for UW-Platteville, and Darryl Browning is the owner of Browning Motors and U-Haul. So, now that I've briefly introduced the candidates, it's time for the candidates to introduce themselves and answer the question of why they're running, and we'll start with Brian.
Well, my name is Brian Chapman, like Mr. Prestigard said, and I am running because I feel that it's an opportunity to serve my community. I've been in scouts for a while, I got my Eagle Scout back in 96, and when the opportunity came, I felt like, well, maybe I had something to offer to this community. Public service is something I've, I believe in. Pretty much, to answer the question, what is the most important thing that the city should be focused on this particular coming-up year, I would say is to be a good steward of what we already have and to create more jobs in our community. There's a lot of people struggling out there, and to see the city focus on developing more industry to the area, that would be a priority, in my opinion. And also, if anybody's driven on some of the streets in town, Forest Street, Second Street, Southwest Road, there are some infrastructure things that need to be looked at as well. And that's what I think is important for our community.
Okay, Brian, thank you. Amy?
Thanks again for having us, Steve. This is great that the community organized the opportunity for us to do this forum. Again, I'm Amy Seeboth, and I am running because I believe that I can contribute a great deal to the community. I've been on a number of community commissions and councils, I've been on the planning commission, and I'm currently a board member of the Platteville Community Arboretum. I've really enjoyed my time being involved in the community and the work that I've been able to accomplish, and I believe that being on the council will allow me to take that effort and those initiatives to the next step and help assure that the community keeps moving forward and being progressive, creating jobs like Brian mentioned, being a place where families with young children, where the elderly, where people of all different backgrounds would like to live. And my experience has shown that I've been able to work with different groups and accomplish these sort of things, and I'd like the opportunity to do it with the Common Council.
All right, Amy, thank you. Darryl?
Hi, thank you for coming. My name is Darryl Browning, I am 68 years old. I was born and raised here in Platteville, my father and grandmother lived here all their lives on that. In my life, I have seen Platteville go from a mayor-type government to a city manager-type government. I have also seen Platteville double in size from when I was a kid. I run the Pontiac dealership for my dad before I became the youngest General Motors dealer in America. In my 30 years of being a Pontiac dealer, I had to treat customers fair and equal. I had to hire and dismiss employees. I dealt with General Motors and also worked with, worked within the DMV rules. I feel that my 30 years of doing this will help me make the best decisions for the residents of, of our city. I think our taxes are high enough now, and borrowing money and/or raising taxes should not be an option on that. I also think City Hall should be open on Fridays. Anybody that is trying to grow or bring new jobs to this community calls when they have time, and if they call and nobody answers the phone, they don't call back on that. My primary reason for running is, right now, I do not feel the city treats everybody fair and equal. Thank you.
Okay. Now that we've gotten things rolling here, and I've discovered that they have a cough switch, but I don't, so I'll just have to go this direction, I guess. Let's start with our first question. First question, and we'll start with Darryl. What do you believe is the single most important issue in this campaign, and what is your position on it? You can start with one issue.
One issue. On that, I feel that the city is not totally examining all options when it comes to certain projects. The, I have stated before, that when a bid is put out and accepted by the city, it should be cemented in stone on that. We shouldn't go back and raise the, the cost of the project because the engineer or the company comes in and goes, "Oh, if you use this product, it will last longer," on that. You cannot balance your books or your checkbook if, when you go into the store and you look at a product and go, "Well, here, there's three of them, this one's a buck and that one's $20," on that, and you look at it and go, "Life expectancy over here is 10 years, and this one doesn't have a life expectancy, so I'm just going to spend the $30." Your personal finances cannot be run that way, I don't see how the city can run that way.
Okay. Amy?
What is the greatest challenge facing the city right now?
Single, yes.
Single greatest challenge facing the city? I would say that the single greatest challenge facing the city is our unprecedented growth. The city has grown more than 12% in population over the past 10 years. As you all are aware, that's created a lot of challenges and problems, including parking and housing, I think are the two biggest ones that continually come up. I would like to say, though, that I think the real single issue is managing that growth in a sustainable, continued way, so that we're using it as an opportunity. We have growth when a lot of cities are seeing population and economic declines, that puts us ahead of the curve immediately. So the question I would pose to the city is, how can we turn that growth into an opportunity to create a city where young professionals want to stay, to create jobs and opportunities for them, to create housing stock that they want to live in, and to create outdoor opportunities for them to recreate in? So I think our biggest challenge is managing our growth in a really succinct opportunistic way.
Okay. Brian?
Well, I think growing, our city growing is a great thing. I know I move, I love the area, I moved back myself, and I was fortunate to pick up a job, working for somebody else after several years of working for myself. But I would say that managing our debt is a big thing, living within our means. Yes, you have, many of us own homes and we have mortgages, we take out to own those homes, but we, it's important not to overstrap ourselves, and as a, as a city, I think we need to, if we have any kind of debt, which I'm sure we do, we should look at ways to lower that debt or keep it the same while improving some of the things that need to happen in, in town, such as our streets. I am very thankful to be in a community that is growing and that I do believe has a lot of great values, the, the university being a great place to get educated. So I would say that the, the single greatest thing that we need to focus on would be to live within our means and try to work on lowering our debt. Thank you.
Okay. Here comes the next question, and this is a question about essentially what happens if you're elected. You would be, of course, one of seven members on the Common Council. The Common Council, over the last nearly two years, has gotten some criticism about decorum and respect among the members of the council, and also, in some cases, decorum and respect between council members and residents of the city. And so here is my question. Are decorum and respect among members of the Common Council as well as between the council and constituents, is that a problem or not? And we'll start with Amy.
Thank you. I believe that communication is an incredibly important aspect of having a community that's healthy, and I think that it's the job of the council to maintain decorum and maintain open lines of communication with its residents, so that people can feel comfortable coming to meetings and expressing their point of view and opinions. It's just like any relationship that you're in, the better you can communicate and the more open you can communicate, the more successful everybody's going to be when we work together. I think that my personal experience has shown me this, we've, this summer, I was lucky enough to travel with a group of people to Denver on behalf of the city for the All-American City Group. We brought a, a group of very diverse people with very diverse backgrounds together, and we had to talk through how to prepare our script to talk about how wonderful Platteville is. And I think there were moments where we didn't always agree, but we learned how to work through those challenges and come to consensus, and then in the end, we went and we had a great time and we really represented the city well, because we could express ourselves through decorum and congeniality. So decorum is incredibly important.
Okay. Brian?
Yes, could you repeat the question, please?
Sounds like a spelling bee. Are decorum and respect among members of the Common Council as well as between the council and constituents a problem or not?
Well, I think it can be a problem, and it cannot be a problem. I think if individuals work at communicating, like in any relationship, you can understand or get a better sense of what they're trying to say, and a lot of times, it takes effort on, on both parties. So, being a citizen myself, I made the effort to come out to Common Council meetings to find out what's going on. I don't perceive there being any animosity between any, any of the Common Council members or constituents, residents of the city. So I think that if we can work at communicating as, as residents and as people that are the leaders of this, this city, I think we can approach problems in a, in a sound way. Thank you.
Okay. Darryl?
Okay. As far as animosity between the council and the council meetings I have been to, I have not seen any since the council changed, but I agree with my, the young lady to my left here, that communication is super-important in any business relationship. But the one thing that I also feel is extremely important is you have to be willing to listen, and listen to the people on the street, plus listen and respect the other council members.
Okay. Thank you. Rolling on to the next question, which is also tied to essentially if you get elected. The question I have is, does the Common Council adequately manage city government? And your answer, I have heard, for instance, complaints that the city council micromanages. There are some questions about the relationship between the council and the city manager position, and, you know, those are the sorts of questions that have come up to me, so I think people are interested in your response to this, starting with Brian.
Well, I do know, being a, a council person, it's not a full-time job, but you are out in the community. I do know that the city has hired these individuals, the city manager, Larry Burke, Howard Crawford, the, the public engineer, the public works director, Joe Carroll. We hire these individuals to, to, to actually manage the, the city for us, and we have to rely on some of their experience to be able to help us make good decisions on, on behalf of, of you, the, the public. So relying on what they're, what they're, the data that they're collecting for us, as well as our discussions with the, the public, is, is very, very necessary, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Darryl?
I don't really feel the council micromanages. I hope that when there is things being pushed for, that in their district, that is what the residents in their district has asked them to either vote for or vote against. I feel that our council should not come in with their personal agenda, and like me, on many subjects, I have no idea what the general public thinks, but I feel it's, if I get elected, it would be my job to find out, and even if I don't agree with it, go with their, their decision.
Okay. Amy?
I think this is a really excellent question. In my previous job at Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, I was able to work with different municipalities or local governments all across southwestern Wisconsin. I've worked with many, over 30, some local governments, and it's been really insightful for me to see the way that the different governments were able to run and act. We have one model of government where we have a city manager, and that's different than other communities that might just have a mayor or an elected official running the city. In all, I think that your city government's only as good as your council, and it's on the shoulders of the council to be as informed and educated as possible, especially when hiring your city manager and city staff, because those are going to be the people that are going to know a lot more about the day-to-day. But the job of the council is really to keep that big picture, that vision in mind, and be educated as much as possible to make sure we're asking the right questions of the staff. I think that being on council is a very serious responsibility, and I intend to take it as such, but all in all, I do think that the city's been doing very good, and I think that the decisions of the council to date have left us in a good position with a competitive tax rate and other excellent city services in place, and I would take that responsibility seriously and want to pursue continuing it and taking more opportunities from it.
Okay. Next question, we're rolling along, right along here. Are city services adequately provided for their cost or not? Amy kind of brought that up, so that becomes the next question, actually. And if they are not adequately provided for their cost, what needs to change? And we'll start with Brian.
I personally think that I'm getting a really good bang for my buck. I mean, I think we're doing just fine. I mean, my, my garbage is picked up, the, the guys are out plowing snow, we've had a lot of snow this year, and they, they go the extra mile to make sure that things are cleaned up and taken care of around here, so I, I think, despite the fact that many city workers not working full-time, a full 40-hour work week, they're still doing what they need to do to help keep this, this city up and running. So I think, yes, I think we are getting good service, good value for what we are paying for in taxes.
Okay. Amy? You started to answer this before, in a sense, so go for it.
Did, yes. So continuing the thought, like I said, I believe that we have competitive tax mil rate compared to other cities in southwest Wisconsin, but for that, I think we do have really relatively good services. The city did a survey in 2009, and most residents seemed to agree as well that they were satisfied with streets and waste. Snow plowing is something that people will probably always want better, and that's not anybody's fault. So I feel that, I haven't been privy to the nitty-gritty, but all in all, the city's been doing a good job, but I do think it's the job of the council to always look closely at those issues and see if there's ways for improvement, given the resources that we have.
Okay. Darryl?
Okay. City services. Being, I've been a lifetime resident of Platteville, I have seen it evolve from terrible to, in my opinion, really good. When I was a young man, I could remember the city crews coming down the street, taking the grids, the grates off of the storm drains, and would shovel out the material inside the same storm drains, pick the fish worms out of it, put the material back in, put the grate on it. Okay? Since then, we've had, and our last city street manager, Paul Budden, has turned everything around 100%. Now, as far as cost goes, I have never studied or looked at how much this is costing us, but as far as the service we are receiving, talking to people from other communities, I think City of Platteville has excellent services.
Okay. Thank you. We move on to the next question, and this is a question about city government administration, basically, the management. This is about the city manager position. Is the relationship between the city manager and the Common Council the kind of relationship it should be? Is the relationship between the city manager position and city residents as it should be? And if you don't believe that that's the case, what do you think should change? We'll start with Amy.
Excellent. I, I sort of answered this previously, that I do think that a city manager type of government is a very healthy one, given the type of decisions that municipality needs to make. It's nice to have a city manager who has a lot more background and time to dedicate to decision-making than an elected official might. As far as I've known, there've been hot-button issues that some people disagreed with their current city manager, and you could probably debate a lot of different decisions, but all in all, it's excellent to have a city manager who knows the day in and day out of the city and knows the budget and how to work with it. I've seen the city's budget get balanced over the past few years, we're in a much better fiscal position now than we were three years ago, and I know that we've had a lot of new businesses move into the community. So I guess it depends on how you measure the relationship with the city manager and their success, but those sort of indicators, to me, show that we're doing well and we're on the right track.
Okay. Brian?
Well, I think the format of having a city council and, and a city manager is actually a good format to have government, because like I stated before, having it more of a person that has experience and is an expert in running a municipality is, is a good thing, rather than, let's say, an elected official who may be doing something else for a profession. So I think the biggest thing, though, would be to have accountability between the council and the manager in a greater way, and that all goes back to communication, so, and it takes work. I don't know specifically how the city manager is currently communicating with the city council, but I do know, I'm sure they, they talk via phone, email, they're here and they discuss during Common Council meetings. So I, I think that the relationship can always be improved if it's worked at. As far as things that are being done, I think that's why you have a council, is to help keep the city manager accountable too, to help, help have advice, advisors, different opinions, a multitude of advisors or counselors, there is, there is safety in that, and you might be able to look at something from a different perspective. So I think having a, a council and a city manager doing that, which appears to be the case, is a good thing, and we should continue to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Darryl? City manager position?
Repeat the whole question.
Is the relationship between the city manager, again, a position, and the city, and the Common Council as it should be, and is the relationship between the city manager position and city residents as it should be? And if you don't believe that's the case, what ought to change?
Well, my answer to the first is, no. Having employed, having employees all of my life, I can tell you right now that if you do not stay on top of them, they will take things into their own hands, okay, with or without your knowledge or without your approval on that. And I feel that, right now, our city manager has been given too much reign on that. He is implementing personal feelings or personal things that he thinks the city should be, should doing, and I'm sure he believes that he is benefiting the city, but I don't think the council, when he does a lot of things, is aware of it until somebody comes up and complains.
Okay. On to the next question, and Darryl gets to start with this one also, or gets to start with this one, I should say. By the city's plan, the city is behind schedule on fixing city streets. City's got a schedule, but they are, I believe there's a certain number of miles that the city needs to fix every year, and they are behind on that schedule. So my question is, what should the city do to get back on schedule? And we'll start with Darryl.
I think that all depends on how much money is in the budget on that, or where we can find the money. And if we can find the money, then let the bids out, let the contractors do their jobs.
Okay. Brian? Nice engineering question for you, sort of.
Well, you can do anything with money, if you have the resources. Basically, if you were to have the money or raise the money, then basically, you, you would be able to get more done, but if you don't have the money and we don't have, have the ability to get the money, then obviously, we will, the streets will continually, continually deteriorate. So I guess it all depends on what the public wants to do. I mean, if the public wants to have better roads, we may have to, you know, dip into our own pockets. If not, maybe the city can manage a way to raise finances in a different way without incurring more debt to get these streets fixed and repaired. Maybe that's putting, putting off a few other projects that we might want to do, like, let's say, rehabbing the city hall here, or, or maybe the library thing that we've, there has been discussion on, and focusing our resources on, on other things that may have a priority. So that's kind of my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Amy?
Great. So the city has just over, I believe, 63 miles of roads, and roads are a very important infrastructure, business and economy rely on it, and yes, it's aging. Platteville's an older city, so of course, their infrastructure will be aging. We typically repair, I believe, 1.5 miles of road a year, but as I understand, what's happened is, we wanted to balance out our operating budget, so we cut back on road repairs in the coming years to about a half a mile a year. And so the question becomes, did we want to be pulling money from our savings to do things like road repairs, or did we want to have a balanced operating budget? That's a tricky question, but those are the type of questions that people on council have to answer. So I would recommend that it would be ideal to do both, that if we could fix the road and continue to have a balanced budget. So I would recommend, um, that it would be ideal to do both, that if we could fix the road and continue to have a balanced budget. I've been, um, and when I was at the Regional Planning Commission, I served as the regional liaison to the DOT. I was a transportation planner, and I know that there's not much money in road repairs right now and road maintenance. There's not grants, they, they're very hard to come by. Um, so that eliminates the option of seeking grant money for road repair. But what I would recommend instead is we can look at other ways to loosen up our budget. We can find other funding for other projects that we wanted to get done, to balance out those sort of opportunities that could then free up money for things like the road repair and the maintenance that we need to maintain in town. So my, my answer, I guess, in short, is I think we should continue to re- maintain and repair our roads. They're very important, but we need to be able to do that by thinking creatively about other ways to find funding for other projects. Um, and then just keep on trucking along as a city.
Okay. Go ahead.
After just being educated a little bit here on that, one of the things that, uh, might help this problem is sooner than just put Chestnut Street on year whatever to be redone on that. Possibly, we could go through the city and grade the streets as to one through five or one through ten as to how bad they are, and do the worst streets first, sooner than just because it's up on time on that. Uh, you take Broadway, which the lower end of Broadway is done, it's beautiful. But the upper end of Broadway, you still can't hardly drive on it, on that. And in my opinion, the upper part of Broadway should have been done before the lower.
Okay, Amy, Brian, want to add anything to your answers, or are you good?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, obviously, roads are, are a major, uh, function of city service, but so are emergency services, police, fire, and EMS. And that's the next question. The city has been discussing three major changes to emergency services. Uh, they've been talking about a combined city and Grant County Dispatch Center. Um, they have combined, they've talked about having Southwest Health Center handle EMS services instead of it being a city service. And they've also talked about a new fire station. Uh, and so I'm interested in your opinions on whether you support any of those, or don't, or whatever. We'll start with Daryl.
Having been a fireman for forty-five years, I can tell you that the Platteville Fire Department is extremely crowded on that. And if, I believe Lenny Longsberg owns the property across the street where the beauty salon is. If Lenny sells that and the people that buy it stop us from pulling the trucks up into their back round, uh, rounded, or alleyway that goes around their businesses, there are trucks that I don't think we will be able to get into that fire department. Now, having said that, I feel that buying a new parcel of land and completely moving the fire department may not be necessary. If the backing in off of Main Street with those trucks is not a problem on that. The Main Street is wide enough that the trucks can line up and can easily make the door. So if the department expands to the west, it would only interrupt one business in that. And by adding, uh, three stalls in there, it would alleviate our overcrowding. Now, as far as the EMS, I really am not qualified to speak on them.
Okay, anything about, uh, dispatch?
What?
Dispatch? The, uh, combined city and, the, the city's been talking to Grant County Sheriff's Department about combining dispatch services. Any opinion about that?
A- as far as eliminating our dispatches here in town, uh, I'm biased, and that because of, of the fire department. But I can tell you this, that if we eliminate the dispatching center here in town, and Lancaster goes down, and this city would get hit with a natural disaster, tornado, whatever, it would be mass chaos on that. Until the, uh, uh, emergent, emergency management system could get out their trailers and hook up in that. It would be chaos, and for us, for everybody else responding. So I don't agree with eliminating the, uh, communication center here in town.
Okay, Amy.
Excellent. Well, first, I want to say that Platteville is an incredibly safe community to be in, which is, I'm sure, a large part of why we all want to live here and do live here. And so I think maintaining that safety is of utmost importance to us. Um, I think that intergovernmental agreements or creative ways to fund safety can be a good opportunity for us, as long as the community doesn't lose control. We need to make sure that our needs are being met first and foremost. Um, so beyond that, I don't know all the details of these proposed projects, and I, as a council member, would have to seriously research the pros and cons to each and talk to the community to learn what the best decisions might be.
Okay, Brian.
Sure, I would, uh, keep it together, uh, keep the communication with the fire department and keep it in-house, and, uh, expand the current location of the, uh, the fire department. Uh, because if you're working, if you're together, uh, you're going to have a better service, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, next question. Um, the state has been reducing aid to the city of Platteville for several years. Um, so the question becomes, how should the di- how should the city deal with declining state funding without just raising taxes? And Amy gets to answer this one first.
Seems like everything I do lately has declining funding. I'm sure we're all in the same boat, that funding is obviously becoming more scarce. And so the way I think we can deal with that as a city, short of raising taxes, which I don't think anybody wants to do, but the way we can do that is, like I mentioned before, we need to be more creative and more opportunistic, and look at ways to increase funding through different means than just relying on the state to fund us. An obvious method is to increase our tax base, the majority of our funding comes from taxes. But I'm not saying we need to increase our taxes. What we could look at is increasing the value of our buildings, or the number of buildings that we have. Specifically, I think Platteville has a lot of opportunity in redeveloping our older community housing stock and our older buildings to bring new value to the lot, the lots and the parcels that, um, may have seen better days in the past. So I see as an opportunity for Platteville is to look into redevelopment, infill development, and building property value growth within the resources that we already have.
Brian.
Could you repeat that question, please?
Uh, the state has been reducing aid to the city of Platteville, so how should the city deal with declining state funding without just raising taxes?
Well, um, obviously, uh, by attracting more people to the area and having more taxpayers would increase, uh, our, our income. So as we develop the city of Platteville, uh, which it is developing and it's growing, we will have more, more income a- as a city. Uh, whether it'll meet our current, uh, uh, needs, uh, only time will tell. Um, basically, if the aid is less, then we can't rely on the federal government, which means we may not be able to provide more service, uh, as what we're currently used to. Um, it's just like how it is with me and my own business. I mean, uh, times were good at one time, and times are not. So basically, we got to make do until we can, uh, have, have the resources to be able to, uh, to be able to, uh, pay for everything. So as, how we're going to do that, I guess, uh, I would have to talk with more of the, the experts that the city has employed to be able to make a better decision in how to go about doing that. Thank you.
Okay, Daryl.
On that, in order to, uh, expand the, uh, ta- the income of the city and not raise taxes, is, we have to make sure Platteville, in the tri-state area, is the number one place to locate a business or your home on that. Next thing is, uh, pretty simple, we don't spend money on things we don't need, and possibly look at what the state has done.
Okay, next question. Uh, speaking of the state, the university is obviously a branch of state government. So how would you evaluate the relationship between the city and the university? And, uh, what, if you think there's room for improvement, what would you suggest? We'll start with Brian.
Well, I suppose, uh, uh, communication, communicating more, finding out what the UW Platteville's, uh, plans are, and what the city's plans are, and having, uh, open discussion. I do believe that, uh, the chancellor has come here and, and talked with the council in the past, and I think that's good. There's always room for improvement, but as far as I can tell, it's, uh, the university's still here, and it provides a lot of jobs for many, many people, and I think it's a, uh, it's a good thing to, to, to help them out, uh, however we can. Uh, in turn, I mean, many of the, the students help and provide services for the public here as well. So I think the relationship is going really well. Thank you.
Okay, Amy.
Great, um, so I think that the, I'll state the obvious, I suppose. The university and the city have a lot of mutual goals. We have a lot in common, we have a lot of things that would benefit both of us mutually. Um, the university employs over a thousand people in the city, they're the city's largest employer. And I think it's important to think of the university like it's just, like it's another business in many ways. And to that end, the university wants us to be a community that will enable them to recruit and retain good employees. So they're looking at quality of life issues, just like the city is, and they're looking at whether or not we have good housing and good resources that will allow, um, the new staff that they're hiring to come and want to stay in Platteville so that they have that retention. So to that effect, I think the university and the city have worked together well, especially in recent years, when working through some of these really contentious issues with parking and housing. But I also think that there's always room for improvement for the university and the city to really sit down and talk about how they can achieve these mutual goals together.
Okay, Daryl.
I think the university of Platteville has, has helped Platteville become what it, what it is now. And I can s- say for certainty that, that, uh, without the university, Platteville would not have grown the way it has. But as far as the university goes as an entity, I feel that it's, the city should treat it no different than any other business or resident in this town, fair and equal.
Okay, next question. Um, I lost my place for a second, but now I found it. Um, the Platteville School District Administrator, the superintendent, last week said, and it's in tonight's paper, as a matter of fact, that, uh, one reason she believes the school district's enrollment is declining is that the city doesn't have enough housing attractive to young families. Um, I guess first question would be, do you agree or not? Do you believe the city has a role in improving city housing? If that's the case, what should the city do? And we'll start again with Brian.
Well, I guess I don't necessarily agree. I mean, I, I moved back to the area and I, I bought a fixer-upper house, and, uh, I've been, uh, slowly but surely remodeling it. And, uh, I have five children, my, of my own, and, and we make do, and, uh, we're upgrading. Uh, so the houses are there, uh, and I do know that we were able to get some finances from the city. There is actually money that is available for, for certain, uh, income level of people to be able to improve these homes. So I think making the residents, uh, of our community aware of those, those, uh, uh, finances, to be able to do so, will, will help, uh, people in, in, uh, a fam- you know, help the families in town to be able to, to live in the city, uh, and, uh, enjoy the city's services. Thank you.
Okay, Daryl.
Uh, I think the solution to the declining enrollment in the hu- school system is very simple on that. All you have to do is create jobs that families can live on, on that. Because they, there are plenty, plenty of lots and land in the surrounding area around Platteville, and they could put a house up in, in two months, and you could move in. So if you attract industry that pays a, uh, living wage, that a young person can, uh, have insurance and have enough money to make the payments on that house, the housing could be quickly, uh, housing problem, if there is one, can be quickly solved.
Okay, Amy.
Okay, I moved to Platteville in two thousand and eight as a single, young professional, and decided that I wanted to stay here long enough to buy a house, and, and then I've since gotten engaged and I'm going to be here a lot longer. But my point is, when I was here in two thousand and eight looking for a house, I wanted a house that was affordable for a single person on a single income, and didn't require a ton of fixing up, because I was working full-time and didn't have the time to fix up a house. Personal experience showed me that that was difficult to do in Platteville, unfortunately. Um, we do have a lot of housing, and it is affordable, but it's not always in good condition or move-in ready. Um, uh, fortunately, I did find a house, and I'm very happy with it now. But my point is, is having come here from other cities, I had fairly high, I guess, higher expectations for the quality of housing stock. Platteville has over fifty percent of our housings ni- built in nineteen seventy or before, which is quite a lot compared to the state. I mean, if you think about it, we're the oldest part of the state, so yes, our housing's among the oldest housing in the state as well. So I do think housing is an issue and a deterrent for a lot of people, um, moving into town, having had that experience myself. But I would propose that instead of building housing on the outskirts of town, which are just going to require more infrastructure and more investment on the part of the city, we really need to look seriously at infill, um, re- remodeling or improving our current housing stock within the city so that our streets and our utilities that we already have in place will serve those houses. And also so that those houses can be affordable. Building a new house isn't exactly affordable to most people, especially on a single income in southwest Wisconsin. So we'd really have to look seriously at how the city can incentivize people to fix up the existing housing stock to make it more attractive to young professionals and young families.
Okay, uh, the next question, and since there are at least two of you involved in business, you'll have an interesting perspective on this, I think. Um, is the city adequately promoting business development, economic development, and downtown development? And if that's not the case, what do you think should change? And we'll start with Amy.
Okay, so, um, are we specifically talking about downtown?
Well, actually, all three, downtown specifically, but throughout the city in general, and, and both business and economic development also.
Excellent. So, um, I, I am excited to see that we've had a lot of new businesses come to the community recently. And I'm particularly excited about Emmy Roth, because they, um, both capitalize on a resource that we're really good at in southwest Wisconsin, Derry. So we know it's a lasting industry around here, but also because their jobs are high-paying. So I'm excited to see that the city is trying to recruit and attract businesses that are going to provide good, decent wages to people who live in Platteville. I'm also excited that downtown is relatively vibrant. Compared to many main streets in Wisconsin, we've had really good business, um, retention, keeping our sto- our shops and stores open. Right now, we have a, a few vacancies compared to the past few years. But I do think that our downtown has been pretty vi- vibrant as well, um, and we have several new restaurants. And that's another point that I wanted to touch on, is I'm excited to see that we're getting more diverse retail and restaurants in our community. I think that's a huge factor in attracting and recruiting, or attracting and retaining young professionals in our community. Um, that survey I mentioned earlier in two thousand and nine, unanimously, pretty much the whole city said that they'd like to see more restaurants and retail. That was one of the biggest concerns our residents had with our city. And I do feel that since then, in the past four years, we've taken some major strides towards providing those resources for our community. Um, and that has me pretty excited to see what the future can bring.
Okay, Brian.
Well, I think, uh, the city has been promoting economic development. We got a Dunkin' Donuts in town now. We, uh, I see Anytime Fitness is, is, uh, is now been built to help burn off those calories from Dunkin- We, uh, I see Anytime Fitness is, is, uh, is now been built to help burn off those calories from Dunkin' Donuts. And, and you've got, uh, uh, when I, when I was going to college here, uh, years ago, there was no Menards. Now there isn't Menards. Um, I see many contractors coming and going, uh, u- utilizing that, uh, that particular store, myself included. Uh, so I, uh, currently, I believe there's a, uh, a TID, TID six, uh, some industrial park development going on, uh, extending some, uh, storm sewer and some other things, uh, that the city is working on. And so I, I think that we, we are trying to promote, uh, and attract industries to come here. Uh, so I think we are, we have a plan that's in action and we're, we're pursuing it. Uh, so it's good to see that happening. Thank you.
Okay, Daryl.
No, I don't think that we are promoting, uh, the city and/or downtown. Uh, all day long in my business, I have a radio playing. And I hear Fenimore, Lancaster constantly doing promotions to live radio, uh, to bring people i- into their downtown areas on that. Now, from what I hear from some of the businesses on, on Main Street, uh, some of them feel that, uh, more should be done. Uh, what that is, I do not know.
Okay. Let's move on to another subject that, uh, a lot of meetings were held. Meetings have been held. Doesn't appear like it's a subject that's necessarily going away. And that is parking, specifically downtown, but also in areas around downtown. Um, do you approve of what the city has done in cha- in terms of, uh, parking regulations, uh, offering rental parking, um, and so on, or not? And if you think that the city is not doing the right thing, what do you think they should be doing as far as parking goes? We'll start with Daryl.
Parking, as far as what the city has done, uh, the city allowed the university or the alumnus association to build a dormitory, which was badly needed, without regards to parking. Therefore, uh, on the, uh, southwest side of town, you have to have a permit on that. I think that having lived on Division Street most of my life and coming home at six, six-thirty, seven o'clock at night and having to park in Clarice Bank parking lot and get my car out of there before they found it in the morning because there was no parking on, on Division because of students on that. And students that were living in the dorms and would bring their car and park it on, on, uh, Division sooner than buy a parking permit from the university is that the, a lot of the parking, I think, could be solved if the university addressed their parking problem. On that, and as far as downtown, I am not qualified to speak on it at this time. If elected, I will try to, uh, figure it out.
Okay, Amy.
Excellent. The parking issue has been very contentious. Um, I think that the university and the city have taken really great strides towards fixing it and finding a solution that works. I think the big vision is that we would like, the city and the university both would like to have students not bring their cars to the community. Um, cars are a hassle in so many ways. Not only would they create a need for more parking throughout the city, like parking lots, but they also provide more wear and tear on the roads. Um, so I think that vision to remove the cars has many, many benefits for the community, not only the ones I just mentioned, but also if you have students with cars, what do they do? But they leave the community on the weekends. They get out of town as much as they can. What I think the university's trying to do is build a culture where students come into the community and stay through the semester. And when they're here, they become a part of that broader community, not only the campus community, but they also start spending more time in Plattville, shopping at our businesses, going to our restaurants, becoming involved in Plattville as a place, which is nothing but good for our economy. So the idea behind it is that if we can get students to be on campus and in the city without cars, it'll be beneficial eventually to all of us. But I said eventually because what we're really talking about here is a cultural change. We need to get used to the idea of not having cars and provide infrastructure for students to get around the community without cars, looking at improving potentially our sidewalks or walking trails, which the city's been working on. Um, so there's a lot of ways that we can work toward these solutions. But in, in the end, I think that mutual goal is that we have students here who stay here, who shop here, who live here. And parking is one piece of that. And in response to the parking downtown, I do know that a lot of students live downtown, um, in the apartments above Main Street and behind it. And I know that parking is specifically an issue for those people because otherwise they have to move their car every twenty-four hours. So the assigned parking is one way that we can begin to deal with that problem, that a student could come and have a car and live downtown and have a place to leave their car for several days at a time without having to move it daily. I myself have had a number of friends live downtown and they've gotten a lot of tickets because it's really hard to move your car every twenty-four hours. So I think the assigned parking is in the right direction. But I think it's just one of many, many things that the city and the university need to do to work together to resolve that parking issue.
Okay, Brian.
Well, the only way you could really resolve it is to free up some space and dedicate it for, specifically for parking. So obviously that would cost money. So we would have to figure out how to raise the money to purchase land, uh, in the downtown area and, uh, dedicate it for parking and, and offer it to the general public or, uh, sell parking stalls. I do know over, uh, by where I work, uh, by the Mexican restaurant, there, there is a parking lot and the, uh, the owner of the Mexican restaurant does charge out for his parking stalls. So, uh, there is a way to make money from, from renting out, uh, parking, uh, spots to the college students. But I do like, uh, Amy's idea in promoting a culture where college students don't necessarily need to have a car, uh, while they're in college. Uh, maybe once in a while, I mean, it'd be nice to get go to and from, from home, but you can always carpool. I know when I was in college, I didn't have a car. I didn't have, I didn't get my first vehicle, I didn't buy it until I was out of college. I was graduated and moved on with, in my life. Uh, so I was able to make do and I saved a lot of, a lot of money in the process. So, uh, I think promoting, uh, that cultural change and, and a different perspective on making do without a vehicle, uh, for students is a, is a, is a great way to approach the problem. And then also maybe perhaps purchasing land, like I said, specifically dedicated for parking in the downtown district, uh, not only for students, but also for, for the city and, and for its residents. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. Um, the common council last year, uh, passed new ordinances, not about parking, although they did do some. Um, but the ordinances that passed last year, some of them dealt with problems that those who are over-served in city bars, including specifically the bars on Second Street, uh, bring to the rest of the city. Um, and so my question is, how do you evaluate what's happened so far? And the two that come to mind are, uh, the public intoxication ordinance and then also banning overnight driving, uh, on Second Street, uh, from, I think it's, uh, ten at night until six in the morning. How do you evaluate those things? And then should the city be doing more, uh, to deal with bar problems? And we'll start with Daryl.
Over the years, I can remember, uh, Second Street being shut off, turned into a walk mall. Uh, and I, I guess it didn't work because the, the Second Street has always gone back to letting cars drive up and down it. Uh, the second part of it, uh, people that are, that drink too much. I don't know how you change this. Uh, i- i- you know, that's part of being an American, I guess. On that freedom to do, to harm ourselves and, and freedom to drink when we have the money on that. Uh, the, I do feel that like, uh, the annex down there and on Highway one fifty-one, that they have, uh, uh, a shuttle service that if somebody's having too much fun, they get them to take their car home and, and bring them back to the bar and then, then take them home at night. Uh, I think that sooner than it being a burden on the taxpayers, that is something that the bar owners, uh, should address. And the city should, uh, uh, come up with some way to make it, uh, uh, a serious issue with them.
Okay, Brian.
Well, I don't know all the ins and outs, but, uh, i- if there are current ordinances against public intoxication, uh, maybe raise, raise the fine or the penalty as a deterrent to, uh, public drunkenness and causing problems. Um, really, it all comes back to, it's a character issue. And will the individual who's drinking be responsible? And I do know there are services available, uh, like Daryl mentioned down at the annex. I mean, there's taxi services. People can call the taxi and have them pick them up if they wanna have a good time on Second Street. I don't recommend it, but that is, uh, uh, the, the freedom that we have in this country is to, uh, to drink. But there are laws against drinking and driving and it's, it's not safe. It's wrong. Uh, I personally don't drink. I gave it up. Uh, and I would recommend that college students do likewise. That's my, my personal thoughts on it. But obviously not everybody's going to do that. So obviously if it's wrong, then, uh, there should be a penalty for it. And I'm sure there, I think there are penalties for it. So, thank you.
Okay, Amy.
Okay, the drinking on Second Street is obviously a big problem for the city and the university both. Um, I think it's important in this case to think about why the students are out drinking as heavily as they are. I think that it's important to understand the culture that's created that because then you can really start addressing the problem rather than just hiding it. Um, I know the university's been trying a great deal to create more activities and social opportunities on campus so that students can remain on campus to stay active, instead of feeling that they need to go downtown to see and meet people. But I also think that it's the job of the city to have that conversation too and think about, okay, who's our clientele? And fifty percent of our population is aged eighteen to twenty-one, basically. So how can we serve them better? And if they are choosing to go out to drink, maybe there's other things they might do instead. If we can recruit businesses that are entertainment, that would be appealing to that age group, that do not require that you just get drunk all night, that might be a really great angle for the city to take. I think that it's been a problem. I think college students will be college students. And I think we've all probably been in a place where we were bored teenagers, not knowing what to do. So we need to put ourselves in their shoes and think about how we can react to their needs as individuals and maybe even find an opportunity for the city in that conversation.
Okay. A more general, much more general question now. Um, this is a three-year term that you're running for. Um, at the end of the three years, whoever wins may or may not decide to run again. But, um, let's, uh, point five or six years down the line, say twenty twenty. What is your vision for the city? And where would you like the city to be by twenty twenty? And we'll start with Amy, 'cause you look like you really wanna answer that.
I think vision is an incredibly important asset when you're gonna be a common council person. I feel like you need those people to lead the direction and where we wanna go. To that end, I think Plattville should be on the map, not just as your average municipality, but I think in twenty twenty, we should be one of the cities that other small towns around the United States will look to for leadership and direction. We should have a quality of life that makes people feel very proud to be here. We should have a lot of green space, like we do. We have fifteen parks already. But we should be promoting those assets and using them to attract young professionals to address the school issue. We have so many wonderful things here. We shouldn't be having a problem with attracting young families to live in Plattville. So we need that vision. We need to come together and think about all the things that make Plattville wonderful and then make sure that we are improving upon them and promoting them and using them actively to make this a community that's wonderful for not only our residents today, but for the people we hope will be moving here in the future.
Okay, Daryl.
On that, six years down the road?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully in six years, the city will not need to borrow any money and any debt it has will have been paid off. Uh, two, uh, and the most important, that we continue and make sure that Plattville is the best place to live in the, in the tri-state area. And therefore will attract the young professionals and the families and Plattville will, uh, grow.
Okay, Brian.
Well, in twenty twenty, I think it would be possible to be debt-free. Um, maybe not totally, but maybe half. You know, lower our, 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 our budget or keep a same budget. Uh, it, I think in twenty twenty, we could have probably two or three more, uh, manufacturing plants or some kind of industry since we're, the, the current commission is, uh, council is, is promoting that right now in the different TID districts. So I would suspect, uh, I'd like to see at least one or two more, more manufactured plants, some, of some, of some nature. I know we have High Pro, uh, Emmy Roth case, cases come. Uh, so I'd like to see that, uh, by twenty twenty, more of that happening. And, uh, obviously I think we can see more of our roads repaired. And I think with the, uh, the CIP plan that's been, been in place, that they, they currently believe passed or have an idea of what they wanna do with the next, uh, four to five years, we will see some of that. Uh, so that's kind of my thoughts. Thanks.
Okay. Here's the next to last question. The marathon is almost over. Um, is there an issue that hasn't come up tonight or has not come up at all during the campaign to this point that you feel strongly about? And if so, what is it? And what's your position about it? And we'll start with Brian.
Well, being a scout, I think, uh, we should do the pledge of allegiance during common council meetings, just to pay our respects to, uh, the higher powers and the authorities that are above us. So I guess that's the, pretty much the thing that I would like to see happen in our meetings. Thank you.
Okay, Daryl.
Questioning again.
Is there any, is there any issue that has not come up tonight, hasn't come up, uh, elsewhere in the campaign that you feel strongly about? And if that's the case, what's your position on it?
There's a lot of issues I feel strongly on. I feel that the city not treating the citizens of Plattville fair and equal is unacceptable on that. You cannot attract, uh, the young professional into this town and expect them to stay when you single out, uh, sections of the town and go after it on that. And the other people are going, huh, what? I've never heard of such a thing on that. That needs to change. The word fair and equal needs to be applied.
Okay, Amy.
Um, I guess the one thing that we haven't really touched on, we've only done it in passing, is the fact that we have really cut back on our capital expenditures in our budget. And yet we have several really big project proposals sitting on the shelf, waiting for us to review. Like the new fire station came up, um, but the library block, there's been a lot of proposals about what to do with the library block. Um, building a new city hall or renovating our current city hall has come up. And even I wanna bring back that conversation about the innovation center. That was a big conversation a couple of years ago. So I just wanna point out that we've sort of stalled on a lot of our capital investments for the time being in order to improve our budget and balance our budget. And I think that we still need to continue with the conversations about what we're gonna be building and how we can build it. And can we make this happen without raising taxes to our residents? So I think that's a really big issue that's gonna be coming around the bend and I'm excited to be a part of that conversation.
Okay. Since that was the next to last question, here I have the final question. It is possibly the most important question though, um, and it is really the most obvious question. Why should people vote for you for the common council? And we'll start with Brian. Why should people vote for you for the common council? And we'll start with Brian.
Well, um, I guess, uh, I don't have all the answers. Um, I, I might be, I just have one piece to the puzzle. I, I think I can be a benefit. I do have some, some life skills and, and experiences. Uh, as I, uh, stated in the newspaper today, I, I mean, I consider myself a liberal conservative family man. And, uh, I, I do have some Christian values. I think would be an asset to the city. Uh, though I understand not everybody has those values. But I think, uh, as a city, uh, I can help us determine what our true needs are uh, and determine what our needs and our wants are and how to approach in the upcoming years and how to address the issues that do come up. Uh, so that's why I think, uh, you should vote for me. Thank you.
Amy.
Excellent. Um, well, I'd like to say, or again, point out again, that I have a really strong history of committing time and energy to the city and city projects and commissions. I've been on the planning commission. I'm currently on the extraterritorial board, it's a mouthful, extraterritorial zoning board of appeals. I'm on the Platteville Community Arboretum. I'm on the Main Street Sustainability Committee. And I've done a lot of other side projects with the city and the broader community. So I've put in the time to know that I like what we're doing here in the city and I like doing it with the city. And, and that's a very comfortable feeling, knowing that I'm taking on a big commitment by running for council. But in addition to that, I also have a master's degree in urban and regional planning and I'm a certified planner, which fits very well in being on the common council. I have a strong background in municipal government relationships. And possibly most importantly, I really like the city of Platteville and I'm choosing to live here by choice because I like it. And I plan to be here for a long time and I wanna make sure that I'm a part of bringing the vision that I have for the city and bringing the city to its full potential as a community that we all really enjoy living in, has a good quality of life and isn't, um, unaffordable. So I hope that I can be elected on the council so that I can help the city achieve that vision.
Okay, finally, Daryl.
Why should you vote for me? I think it's pretty simple. One, I'm the oldest candidate. Two, I'm a nice guy. But unfortunately, if that was the only reason to, to decide between the three of us, I'd get out on that. The truth is, the city needs to change. I sold a lot of automobiles because I answered my phone. From nine to six, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, eight through twelve, I am at my business. I do care what the residents of Platteville have to say and will listen to them. I feel if the state can control costs and run a surplus, the city can do the same on that. I will do my best to make sure that all residents of Platteville are treated fair and equal. I have never worked for the city, nor does my business have any ties to the city. My vote will be, what is the best for the residents of Platteville? And that, as for, I, it's to go back, I am sixty-eight years old. And, uh, for, all right, let me start off. Out of all the sixty-eight-year-old men running for city council, I am the best-looking one. And a nice guy. If elected, I will work hard to do the best job for the residents of Platteville.
Okay, uh, I would first like to thank all of the candidates for, uh, not only running, but also agreeing to come out here tonight, um, to participate in this forum. I'd like to thank the, uh, Main Street Program, Mountside Bakery, did the cookies, they're great. Rumor has it they're great. Um, Badger Brothers Coffee did the coffee. Thanks to them also for providing that. Um, thanks also to the city of Platteville, uh, for, uh, televising this. This will be available on, um, CenturyLink Cable Channel Thirty-Six between now and the election day. It'll also be on the city's YouTube channel, which is Platteville W I S C. So you'll be able to watch this, uh, before the vote on the eighteenth. I would remind voters, by the way, that on February eighteenth, all voters will vote in the National Guard Armory on Northwater Street. Um, the polling place in the student center will not be operating for the primary election. Um, and of course, as I pointed out, the primary election's purpose is to eliminate one of these candidates. So two of the three will be in the April first general election. That is the election where everyone will vote at the armory except for if you're in District Three. And that would be, uh, voting place will be at the Piner Student Center where it usually is. In both cases, February eighteenth and April first, the polls will be open from seven in the morning until eight in the evening. And if you're not in the area those days, you can also get an absentee ballot in the city clerk's office. Um, candidates and, uh, those of you watching, uh, here in the municipal building, if you're able to stay, you're invited to stay afterward. I think there's still cookies and coffee left. Uh, and once again, this will be available on CenturyLink Channel Thirty-Six and on the city's YouTube channel between now and the election. Thanks for joining us.